I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we do have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask that you silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we remain standing for Helen Pitta Kelly, a bus driver from 1969 through 1996, who passed away on August 13th, 2024, and for Jennifer Glassman, a teacher aide at the high school since 2022, who passed away unexpectedly last week. Moving on to 4.0 presentations, we have our Comprehensive District Education Plan, better known as CDEP. We've got Dr. Kufel, Mr. Krasman, Dr. Marchioli, Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Gannon, Ms. Luit, and We're going to join the audience here and just thank you to Dave Lowery and Sue Summers
Good evening, board members, Lancaster community. And in the late winter, early spring, we presented on CDEP. We have two, the rhythm is we're going to have two presentations each year. One is on the progress made towards the goals, and then one is on the plans of actions that have been made in collaboration with the various subcommittees to determine the next course of action for the upcoming year, what's working, what's not, where we need to change or keep going. So today's presentation is really about that, the plans of actions, as have been determined by the various subcommittees, working on each of the goals for the CDEP, the Comprehensive District Education Plan. So we have a set of standards, we've been talking about this over the last several weeks at the Curriculum Instruction Office, that we kind of live by. One such standard is, keep the eye on the prize. Okay? I actually recently heard it couched another way, and it said, "The main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing." And you may have heard that before, it was the first time that I had heard that, but in our line of business, the main thing is our students and student learning. So really, CDEP focuses us, the district, the educators, on the main thing, or the prize, which is student learning. No matter how you say it, either one of those gets to the main thing. I will say, in terms of focusing on student learning, the CDEP, and that should look familiar to you if you've been in one of these meetings before, this represents our overall focus on learning. It's not all that we do, but it's the five-year focus that we've had, and we are going into Year Three as a collective group. Our main goal is to make sure that our students are prepared not just for graduation, but for life after graduation, preparation for life beyond Lancaster. Okay? What we've done in these next couple of slides, and we won't belabor these because you're familiar, these are our underlying themes. The underlying themes on the previous slide were the roots of the tree, the things that support the learning. Okay? Support student learning, student growth. There it is. Above, if you want to go to the next one, those are the eight goals that were established from the CDEP Committee several years back. These eight goals each have a corresponding subcommittee comprised of, give me one more time, multiple stakeholders, teachers, counselors, AIS specialists, special education teachers, social workers, psychologists in some situations, BOSI's instructional resources team, student feedback in some capacity, and the administrative team. So we thank the multiple stakeholders for their honesty, their input, their hard work, and their dedication to these goals. They've been with us since the inception, and they've challenged us, pushed us, helped us tweak goals in some situations, and actually have added other goals. So, and their work to develop the plans, which we're going to talk about, has been integral in terms of us making progress towards the goals. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Marchioli to talk about our K3 literacy goal.
Thank you. So thank you all for being here tonight and supporting us as we continue our work to make education the best that it can be. I also want to thank the teachers and the building administrators, who are working on these committees with us, and all the hard work that they've put in. As you might recall from past presentations, we're using a body of research commonly known as the science of reading, to move from traditional leveled guided reading instruction to a more structured literacy model. In doing this, we've been spending more time looking at the subskills that make up reading as a whole. That brought us to the first item that you're going to see on the screen. If you think back to the original CDEP goal, it said that all students would be reading on grade level. As we went along our journeys, and like many districts, we were leveling students and providing supports within those levels, but that didn't always get to the root cause of what the reading difficulty was. So now, we're screening on those subskills, and we're able to give better targeted assistance. As we did that work, we came to the conclusion that it only made sense to amend that goal to better reflect our work. So now, our goal is that all students will score in the proficiency level in each one of those subskills, instead of on an overall level. As you also may remember, the newer research underlines the importance of direct phonics instruction through at least second grade. As a precursor to that, we've added an independent phonemic awareness program, and those are the 44 basic sounds that are in the English language, for our pre-K and kindergarten students. They will also be part of our new phonics program, along with the students in first and second grade. That same program can be used for interventions for students in older grades who still need more support with basic phonics. The research tells us that of the things we can control, beyond phonics, a broad vocabulary and a broad deep background knowledge are the biggest indicators of the ability to comprehend text. We talked about that once before, where we said, "A lot of us have high reading levels here, but if we looked at a brain surgery text, we might not comprehend it at the same level of the text that we have in our own jobs." So same idea here, you need that background knowledge and that vocabulary to be able to comprehend text. Therefore, because of that this year, we are piloting programs in K3 that are designed specifically to build both vocabulary and background knowledge through varied texts and varied interactions with those texts. Finally, we'll continue to support the teachers as we make this change. We've worked in conjunction with BOSI's and the University of Florida to set the stage for our continued capacity building. This year, as we move forward, all teachers will receive training this fall at Legendary Day of Learning, and have additional training over the course of the year through BOSI's and with other experts on high-impact literacy instruction, the big six, which are oral language, vocabulary, fluency, comprehension processes, phonological awareness, and phonics. And we'll also focus on revising our reading groups to better target skills rather than levels. This is a big mountain to move. Many of the teachers in the district, including myself, were not taught to teach reading this way. We were taught to use a guided reading or a workshop approach. And this is exciting work that we're doing, and we can't wait to see the benefits, but we are going to continue to support those teachers since it is such a change for us in literacy. So that's an overview of the K3 literacy goal. And next, we have the 3.8 literacy goal. This goal is challenging because it involves both the community's perception of the assessments and increasing student achievement. This past year, we had a committee look at the various data points to better understand how standardized tests can help us gauge progress with our students. We also worked with the University of Buffalo to implement some of the evidence-based practices that have been developed there, into our classrooms to support student and higher-level thinking skills, like inferencing and analysis. Our teachers in the 3.8 level have also been working with BOSI's to continue to implement some of the more advanced word study models. Our ELA committees spent the year analyzing test data, our Common Formative Assessment, our Universal Screener Data, all of those pieces to better inform our instruction and to make sure that we are intervening with struggling students as early as possible. This year, our teachers will be trained by our BOSI's facilitators on some of the more advanced word study skills that are in, and embedded projects within the standards, to better assess our students. As students grow and use their literacy to learn, these additional skills will be important. We've discussed in the past how the state assessments measure far more than just the ability to read, and these supports should help our students both with the tests, but more importantly, in real-world applications. And the final goal that I'll be touching on tonight is our K12 writing goal. This goal is exciting, but it's also very broad. Writing in kindergarten looks very different than it does in writing in a 12th grade class. Therefore, we've taken a multi-pronged approach to the writing goal. Some of those prongs have been based around certain grade levels, and others are more global. For instance, the ELA programs that we're piloting this year in K3 have writing components, and we've made sure that our review and assessment of those pilots include looking deeply at those writing components. An example of a more global approach is the book study that will take place this year with a team of K12 teachers. The strategies in the book that they will be using are subject-agnostic, and will help us to build capacity for all teachers as we teach writing across content areas. Writing, like reading, has multiple applications, but the same ultimate outcome, the preservation of thought and communicating those thoughts. The three goals that I've discussed are all interrelated. Better readers are very often better writers, and skilled writers are often people who read regularly and broadly. So while they were written as separate goals, it's important that we don't address them in silos. I still consider myself a teacher, so as a teacher, an administrator, a child advocate, and a lover of the written word, I'm excited that we've been given the time and the resources to work on these incredibly important skills. Language forms the basis of every other subject area. And on that note, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mrs. Luit and Mr. Tresman to talk about some of the exciting things that we have going on in those other subject
Thanks, Dr. Marchioli. Our Algebra I CDEP goal is to increase the number of students in a given cohort earning proficiency in the Algebra I for both the course and Regents' Exam in 8th Grade to 85% by 2027. For this goal to be achieved, we wanted to ensure that the appropriate supports are in place for our students. Algebra Labs will continue to be offered during lunch every period for any student who needs additional support throughout the school year. Students are not only encouraged, but always provided with the opportunity to attend. We have also created additional on-ramps for incoming 6th graders that have experienced great success in math during their time at William Street, and they have proven that they are ready for the accelerated model. These students are scheduled together in the same cohort, where they will have access to participate in algebra and labs during their 8th grade year at LMS. Bridge meetings will continue to take place across all three buildings to ensure curricular alignment. During these team meetings, members collaborate to discuss instructional strategies, assessments, data, and analysis, and the effectiveness of classroom interventions with the help of teacher leaders. I also believe it's worth noting that professional development is being provided for all teachers participating in the co-teaching models for the upcoming school year. This will allow the teachers to recalibrate and use the best research-based practices in their classrooms. As we head into the 24-25 school year, we are projecting 49% of students will be taking accelerated math in both 6th and 7th grade. At the middle school, we will have 47% of students that are currently enrolled in algebra, which is a 7% increase from the previous school year. This is a huge accomplishment, thanks to the hard work and collaboration of the William Street teachers and middle school teams, including the 6th and 7th grade teachers, with help of administration. By continuing to offer this on-ramp for 7th grade students, we can expect to see the number rise well above 50% as we move into the future. Our Life Science CDEP goal is to increase the number of students in a given cohort earning proficiency in the living environment for both the course and Regents' Exam in 8th Grade to 100% by 2027. For this to happen, we are continuing to provide additional support for our students, including any student who receives special education services will now be supported during their scheduled class period and lab. Co-teaching training is also being offered for our science and special education teachers to support them in providing the necessary assistance to our students. 8th grade enrollment for the 24-25 school year will see a 6% increase, with 74% of students being enrolled in living environment this school year.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So at the high school level, we've got the physical science goal, and that is similar to that with the life science school, that we're looking to have 100% of our students earn proficiency in at least one of the physical science Regents' Courses. So that would be Earth Science, Chemistry, and Physics. So with that said, over the course of last school year, we revisited some of the science pathways and began updating our course description guide to show potential roadmaps on our science course offerings within the high school. In addition to that, we also began exploring options that help to optimize the enrollment within our science electives, and figuring out how we can strategize course placement, as well as maybe possible alternating courses every other year to maximize student enrollment. Last school year, we introduced a pilot program for incoming freshmen, offering them to take Chemistry or Physics, in addition to Earth Science, which is what traditionally incoming freshmen took if they were to take the living environment in 8th Grade. This year, we're excited to say that we nearly doubled our freshman pilot program in Chemistry from 47 to 84 students. This provides opportunities for students to participate in more aligned programming for their future studies at Lancaster High School. Living Environment teachers in grades 8 and 9 will also participate in bridge meetings. As Mr. Tresman mentioned, these meetings take place to ensure curricular alignment. Just a brief update on the goal this year, looking at our incoming freshman cohort, we have 68% of the freshman cohort that are currently enrolled in a physical science course. This accounts for the students who didn't take living environment in 8th Grade, so that means they're taking it now as freshmen. So we're looking at another 32% of those students when they become sophomores, to encourage them to take a physical science in their sophomore year. All right, on to our college credit math goal. This one also connects to the goal that Mr. Krasman's going to talk about a little bit after, they kind of are very intertwined, as Dr. Marchioli said earlier. But the overall arching piece here is, we're looking to have 80% of our students graduate with at least one college credit math, whether it comes through AP or a dual enrollment course that we offer at the high school. So some of the steps that we've taken to support these goals at a building level, we've had a variety of processes over the course of the last year that we've actually taken some time to review. We're looking to build an information session that provides students and their families information about AP and dual enrollment courses, because what we found, based on some surveys, is that information out there isn't as well-advertised, and parents aren't as well-informed as they could be. So that's something that we're looking forward to doing this upcoming school year. We've also identified some existing practices and processes that sometimes could be inhibitors to achieving goals like this. For example, we worked with BOSI's to analyze our schedules so that we could be solution-focused on course-level conflicts, because in years past, we've had to have students make some difficult choices. Which AP course do I take? Or do I take this AP course or this other course that I requested, because I want to take them both, but they fall during the same period and there's a conflict? We were able to work with BOSI's this year, and we were able to maximize our course offerings that we have for students. And knock on wood, we haven't received those phone calls yet. Another example is our course drop request process. Really wasn't a process in years past. About 100% of course requests drops were accepted among prior administration. Just over the course of one year, that number has dropped to 60% through careful analysis and review of the request for the drop. So as we reset expectations at the high school, students are participating in more coursework during their senior year, and that leads to more students taking college-level coursework overall. I'm going to pass things off to Mr. Krasman now.
Thank you, Mrs. Luit. Two to go, friends, we're almost there. The next one piece here is college credit. The goal here is to increase the total number of students in a given cohort to 85% who successfully complete three dual enrollment and two AP courses over the course of their four years at LHS. This goal really came to fruition as an examination of our senior profile data. As we took a look at our senior profile data, we came to realize that, on average, about 85% of our graduating seniors were moving on to two- or four-year collegiate institutions. So this is where the 85% comes from. 85% of our kids upon graduation from Lancaster are moving on to post-secondary education. So some of the action steps that we are putting into place, and some that are recaps, as a district, we are committing a serious amount of financial resources to this goal, as we are committing the payment of the first two Advanced Placement exams for students in their tenure at LHS. So the first two exams in which students do participate in are paid for by the school district. Coming up, this year will be in the planning stage of a new Advanced Placement course that we'll be offering to our 10th grade students, in addition to AP World History, and that is going to be AP Seminar. This course is a little bit unique, because it is both a project and an examination-based course. Typically, Advanced Placement, students take an examination, usually around the second week, third week of May, to determine whether or not they receive that college credit or not. This course, it's a combination where students do a culminating project in addition to taking an examination, so it's a two-pronged approach if students receive college credit for this particular course. And we'll be looking to offer this in the fall of 2025. This year, as Mrs. Luit spoke to earlier, we are planning on offering an AP or a college credit night, again, to inform students and families of the different opportunities that we have available for them at Lancaster High School. And we're looking to house that in the winter months before students participate in the course registration process for the 25-26 school year. A year ago, we conducted an audit of our registration and grade reporting processes with a lot of our partner institutions that we work with for dual enrollment. These are colleges in the SUNY system, Hilbert, RIT, and the like. And what we did is, we worked with our institutions to try to find different ways to streamline both the registration and the grade reporting process, to make those processes easier for families for registration purposes, but then also make the process easier for teachers for grade reporting, to give those students credit where appropriate for the completion of the appropriate coursework. And then finally, you know, in addition to trainings from the College Board, in addition to trainings with Erie One BOSI's, we are also looking for other growth opportunities for our staff members from other outside vendors or partner institutions, to equip our teachers with the different tools that they need in order to meet the needs of our ever-changing student population. So that is college credit in a quick nutshell. And to bring it home, Ms. Gannon and Mr. Armstrong, about MTSS.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You'll have the quiz ready for everybody here? Just, I got to bring it home and do a little review, and, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure, engage everybody, right? Make sure they're with us. So as far as multi-tiered systems of support, our goal has been, really, is sort of rubric-based in the sense that when we started on this journey a couple of years ago, we had the building teams, you know, assess where they are in the process of implementing a multi-tiered systems of support. And multi-tiered systems of support, to really do it well, to really intervene early, often, and intensively for children, you have to follow a good process and follow it systematically, and you have to use data to inform your decisions about children. So that's really what we're all about. And in particular, we wanted to get more consistency amongst our K3 buildings. Four K3 buildings, all with a little different flavor, and we're going to, we're on the journey to tighten that up a little bit, but also even amongst grade levels. For example, at William Street, we want to have things consistent, to be fair and equitable to all of our students. So we've come a long ways. I'm going to talk just a little bit about what we did this year, and then I'll turn it over to Aaron to talk about what our plans are for the upcoming year. So one quick example, just to make sure on MTSS, it's about intervening for kids, is the diagram that we put up in the beginning. It's a base, it's a foundation, it's the roots, really, of making sure that all kids can learn. And it's an iteration or a development from our Response to Intervention Program that we implemented probably 13, 14 years ago, where we were, again, not just intervening for academic needs, right, but also for kids that are struggling socially, emotionally, or behaviorally. That's all, it's much more encompassing now with MTSS and holistic, as opposed to just focusing on academics. So what we did this year was, we partnered with BOSI's and did a lot of training, just making sure we understood the core concepts of MTSS and the processes around, you know, studying why children might be struggling and what we could do about them. Did training for all school MTSS teams, and then we followed up again with a trainer at each building to kind of break it down, to see what plans we would have at each building. Definitely, we're focusing on K6, but we didn't, we certainly didn't leave the secondary out of this, really. We have a couple of goals and nine for them this year, too. So the big, again, I can't emphasize enough, the follow-up meetings were to develop a consistent approach and focus on analyzing student data. With the leadership of Karen and Aaron, we also trialed a specialized MTSS management system. I think, Aaron, you're going to talk about that a little bit more. We piloted that at William Street, and it was successful and well-received, and now we're going to roll it out in all our elementary schools, and especially at the K3s with the help of our MTSS mentors that were approved in the budget. So that'll be huge, to make our consistency and implementation sound. And then, I think that's about it. I tried to be short and merciful with you people, and I'm going to turn it right over to Aaron. She's going to tell us what we're up to this year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armstrong. So as John mentioned, we've done a lot of great work over the past year when it comes to MTSS, and what we're doing as a district-wide, and we're ready to do a full implementation at the K6 level for MTSS, which is really exciting. And as John mentioned, none of that would have happened without, really, all the hard work that our MTSS teams did at every single building, meeting with our BOSI specialized trainer in MTSS, to really identify a common language and a common understanding around MTSS, what that means for each one of our buildings, and also identifying what we're doing really well. So as we've said from the beginning, every building has had good MTSS processes, but what we want to do is be able to combine that for a more uniform approach. So we are ready to do that at K6, which is really exciting. So to support that, we are implementing or starting the MTSS coordinators at our K through 3 buildings. This is a start for those coordinators. They are going to work to review requests for assistance that come in from any staff in the building or general education teacher. They're going to look at those to look at tier-one instruction and tier-one intervention, to really identify students' area of need, see if there's any additional data that needs to be gathered, right, and make sure we're ready with case managers for MTSS meetings, which will be really helpful for our K through 3 buildings. In addition, as Mr. Armstrong mentioned, we had trialed an intervention management system called Link It, and we're ready to implement that K through 6, to really manage all of our MTSS plans. So what Link It really does is two things for us. It creates that consistency that we've talked so much about, so that when a child is at, say, Hillview, maybe they move to Court Street at say, Hillview, maybe they move to Court Street at second grade, we know that the plan is going to be consistent from what they had at one building to the next. Everyone's using the same language, everyone's using the same processes and procedures as we move through the process. Same as we transition from our K3s up to William Street. So we're really excited that this platform creates that consistency for us. In addition to that, it also houses student data. It's really a one-stop shop. So when Dr. Marchioli was talking about the FastBridge scores and using those to really guide some of our other, or CEDUP goals, all that data, common assessments, student attendance is all going to be in a one-stop shop so that while we're working through MTSS meetings, we have everything we need to really determine the whole picture of the child. It allows us to create intervention plans, it allows progress monitoring towards student goals. And again, this is something that will follow students all the way from kindergarten up. Right now, we have from K to six, which is really exciting. And as Mr. Armstrong mentioned, we haven't forgot about our secondary team. So needs change a lot for students as we transition to the middle school and the high school. And what we're seeing with our referrals there is that it's more social, emotional, and mental health-based versus those academic skills. So we are working with BOSEs to continue to work with the middle school and the high school so that we're able to expand our implementation by September of 2025 to include the interventions and strategies that we need for students to be successful, both at the middle school and high school as well. So we're really excited about the next year and our process for MTSS. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kufel to close us out.
So thank you. Thank you to everybody up here for the hard work put into the presentation, but also for the hard work that you put in along the way over the last several years as we're going into year three regarding each of the goals and all of the planning that has gone into the development of the goals and the, bless you, and getting our students to hopefully achieve and accomplish those goals. They are district goals. They are lofty goals, as you can see up there. They are very rigorous. And at no point have we said, or the individuals working on the goals said, hey, we're just going to work harder. Let's have the students work harder, let's push them faster, let's accelerate them. It's all done with a feeling of and a sense of how can we support the students and how can we support the teachers? Okay? The teachers have been integral and, as I said, the stakeholders up there in helping us reach these goals for our students, helping the students reach these goals. It's a lot of great work, very proud of the work that so many teachers, administrators, mental health personnel have put into over the last several years. And these goals, like I said, going into year three are self-imposed and they're very rigorous for the sheer fact of we want to make sure our students are prepared for life after Lancaster and that is, that is the prize. So thank you, everybody, for your continued support and resources as have been articulated throughout the course, whether it's in professional development, programs that make life more efficient for our teachers and ultimately our students and families, and any other means possible. So thank you and turn it back over to Mr. Sage.
A real sincere thank you to all of you that presented this evening, but more importantly, thank you to all of the educators in Lancaster because, you know, it starts in pre-K, right? I mean, it goes really fast. My son just graduated and, man, it goes fast. So preschool to K3, you see it, you know, there's a plan there for K3. There's a plan to see how that K3 work translates into the middle school, into the William Street School, and ultimately to the high school. So much work goes in from the teachers and the administrators to get this, you know, set up, right? So really, thank you again because, you know, every single credit, you know, for college matters. And, you know, it's not, you know, 100% that you have to get college credit, right? That's not the goal for everyone. But, you know, it really is important, you know, for the kids that can use it. You know, the dual enrollment, you know, it's just a huge benefit, AP, huge benefit, and all the work that our special education department is doing to make sure that every kid can really thrive in Lancaster. So thank you again. All right. Moving on to 5.0 correspondence. 5.1 and 5.2, we have a couple of emails. 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, can I have a motion to approve the regular session from August 5, 2024?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Not sure how it's August 26 already, but here we are. The LCTA has been very busy this summer preparing for another school year of growth and learning. Our members have attended multiple summer workshops, been working on summer curriculum projects, and attending the UFLI reading training. We are excited to start next week. However, some teachers are a bit more anxious as they await the completion of their new elementary classrooms, which are not projected to be done until this Friday with students arriving on Tuesday. So a little anxiety there. We're also looking forward to showcasing what our members are doing at the individual buildings throughout the 24 to 25 school year at future board meetings. So we look forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Farrar. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Onto 8.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? And 9.0, the superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valley?
Couple of things, Mr. Sage. First of all, yeah, we've all been preparing for the summer, for the start of the school year. The Food Service Department employees attended their mandatory training today. Thank you to all of them who have been in the buildings all summer, accepting deliveries and last week especially, getting kitchens and serving areas set up and ready for breakfast on September 3. They do a fantastic job, always have and continue to do so. Thank you to all the Transportation Department who also held their mandatory training today. Last week, though, these bus drivers in attendance began their week-long process of viewing the routes. Bus stop information was provided to parents electronically and a message indicating the information was available was sent out. They and we are ready to roll as a school district. Thank you to Kim Grimal for her work on the district calendar, which went out a couple of weeks ago. Beautifully done, timely. Thanks again. Thanks to Karen Marchioli and Andy Craseman for all their hard work on the new teacher orientation last week. They and other members of the team conducted two-day orientation to welcome our newly hired teachers, social workers, psychologists, et cetera, et cetera, to the district last Tuesday and Wednesday. There were about 40 teaching individuals who are brand-new to the Lancaster Central School District and it was great to give them a little flavor for our culture, climate, and instructional expectations, and of course, long-term vision. Thank you to Jamie Phillips and all the building administrators for updates to and submissions of the district-wide and building-level emergency response plans. Many people know that in July, the State Board of Regents approved several proposed updates to law 155.17. The district-level and building-level plans were updated in accordance with that law and all the amendments fine-tuned by Al Terris, our safety plan consultant, reviewed by each of the building safety team and principal, and updated for the 2024, 25 school year. So thanks to all involved. I wanted to make sure that I included them and thank you. It's a big process and very important. 475 teachers will be returning tomorrow for three days filled with data meetings, faculty meetings, and days will, the days will culminate with our legendary day of learning, filled with meaningful professional development and professional learning to get the school year started in the right direction. Thank you to Steve Sharowski and Cara Porto Osborne for Young and Right, and Joe Johnson and Joe Armani from Buffalo Construction for all their hard work and the millions of dollars of construction that happened again this summer to ensure our schools are ready for teachers to teach and kids are ready to learn. With a week to go, I would say it's been a very busy summer, but I can't think of a better summer and we're ready to roll. Finally, a special thanks to our Buildings and Grounds Department, who has and always have been absolutely fantastic, working Saturdays and Sundays before the start of school if they needed to, even Labor Day. At certain times, they will not have to do that this year, I do not believe. We're in good shape, but they continue to get our fields, our stages, our classrooms, our lunchrooms, our gardens, our lawns, everything here that exists in Lancaster looking fantastic for the start of another great, great school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Do we have any new teachers? Just wanted to double-check.
Cody was going to come in.
Okay. 11.1.2, can I have a motion on the tenure recommendation?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.1.3, can I have a motion on the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel Memorandum of Agreement?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion on policy deletion, 5240, school tax assessment and collection, property tax exemptions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.3 through 12.5 are all policy first readings. We will vote on these in subsequent meetings. 12.3 is policy reading 6550, leaves of absence. 12.4 is policy first reading 5681, school safety plans. And 12.5 is policy first reading 5683, evacuation, lockdown, and emergency dismissal drills. 12.6, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.7, can I have a motion on the district-wide safety plan? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.8, can I have a motion on the building-level emergency response plans? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. And just to point, Mr. Lyman was excused from this evening. 12.9, can I have a motion on surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the surplus buses? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11 is for information-only tax tertiary settlement agreements. 12.12, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports from June 2024? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the child nutrition annual renewal? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the food service department wages? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the bid/award transportation, parts, and supplies? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion on the bid/award for athletic equipment and supplies? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.17, a contract with the Town of Lancaster Family Support Center? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.18, can I have a motion on the contract with the Town of Lancaster School and Community Support Programs? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.19, can I have a motion on the contract with the Town of Lancaster Facility Use? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.20, can I have a motion on the contract with Pediatric Home Nursing Services, Inc., doing business as Avana Healthcare? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.21, can I have a motion on the contract with Maria Blask? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.22, can I have a motion on the contract with Rachel Snyder, Licensed Behavioral Analyst, Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.23, a contract with BHSC Services? Can I have a motion? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.24, the Summit Center Parent Training Services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.25, the Summit Center Behavioral Consultation Services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.26, can I have a motion on the 2024, 2025 district goals? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.27, can I have a motion on the contracts with Buffalo City School District? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.28, can I have a motion on the contract with Carisal Nursery School? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.29, can I have a motion on the Universal Pre-K Program Plan? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.30, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with Buffalo Construction Consultants, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.31, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with Young and Right Architectural? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.32- 12.32, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with Toth Sports? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.33, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with Weather Proving Technologies, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.34, can I have a motion to appoint school attorney Lips and Mathias, L.L.P.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.35, can I have a motion on the reserve fund transactions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 13.0 is our public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening. And 14.0 is adjournment. Before we adjourn, I want to mention that the next regular session is going to be September 16th at the Lancaster High School Auditorium, and that is at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for coming out this evening.